Good evening and welcome to the June 23 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A meeting was held at 6 o'clock in the council chambers at City Hall for clarification of the agenda. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. This evening's agenda items are: Agenda item number one, roll call; Agenda item number two, approval of minutes; and Agenda item number three, preliminary plat. Acele, will you please call the roll?
Crystal Janda.
Here and I have nothing to disclose.
Jill Kirkham.
President, I have nothing to disclose.
Rich Phillips.
Here and I have nothing to disclose.
Shin Kiu Rue.
Here and I have visited the site for Agenda item number three and I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is approval of the minutes. The Commission may wish to approve the minutes from the clarification and regular meetings from June 9. Is there any discussion on the meeting minutes or any questions? With that, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move that the minutes be approved.
Oh, it's seconded.
It's been moved by Kirkham, seconded by Rue. Will you please call vote?
Kirkham?
Yes.
Rue?
Yes.
Janda?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion, Kirkham.
Agenda item number three is the preliminary plat for South Valley Industrial Park. BBAD, B-BAD, maybe you can clarify that for us. Investments, represented by RMES, has submitted an application for a preliminary plat to develop 9.10 acres, more or less, into 32 industrial lots. The proposed subdivision is located north of South Valley and west of South Fifth Avenue. At this time, I would like to have a representative tell us a little bit more information about your request.
Bill Isley from Bad Investments, we're the landowner and developer. Sometimes it takes a while for communities and utilities to catch up to ideas. And sometimes they have bad solutions when there's a better solution. And this is one of those cases. And we don't have to build this thing overnight, but what we're looking to solve here is, let me just say this, a gate on the road entering this industrial subdivision is far better than the police driving through protecting all of the hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment that these contractors and subcontractors are going to be storing there. The gate will keep thieves out, particularly professional thieves that come in with their trailer and their truck, break into somebody's yard and steal them blind. The road won't. I don't care if it's close to the Idaho State Police, it won't, at all. Stormwater. A paved road with curb and gutter in here will not protect anybody or anything from any stormwater. A gravel road with gravel borrow pits does it automatically. You will never have enough rainfall or snowfall to not absorb into the ground, which is exactly what you should be doing with rainfall. You shouldn't be running it down a gutter, putting it in a big pond, or running it somewhere else, getting it over to the Portniv River after it's run through all these streets. That's how you get the oil and the grease and everything in the river. A lot of places don't do that. They accept gravel in certain cases, driveways, for instance. Many places in this country prefer and recommend and encourage gravel driveways so that the rain, stormwater, has a place to absorb. In this case, what we're trying to do is provide an area for subcontractors, of which there are many in the community, to be able to build their shop and their storage yard to keep their forms and their equipment and to keep it safe. In an area with like-minded people, where they're looking out for each other, and in an area that doesn't allow every tom, dick, and thief to drive through anytime 24 hours a day. Now, it only seems to make common sense to me that when you have a particular need that you're trying to develop for, that you look for particular solutions. And when you run up against hard and fast rules that, oh, well, it's a lot easier for me if I have 32 meters out here and I don't have to go in here, even though this service line is 950 feet long. And we prefer to have them continuous, but they don't make 950-foot continuous service lines. And so, we'll just splice it five times getting there, so there's five times the area that you can have a problem with the water. Oh, but we don't care because you own that. We only own the meter out here. That's not smart. It's not intelligent. It is something that we will try to work with to get it determined. Our purpose is develop an industrial subdivision that is safe and secure for the people that build in there. Without a lot of police, look at it from this standpoint, the police don't have to patrol. If it's a public street, the police have to patrol it. When do they patrol it? Well, whatever, they're not going to stop a single thief. If it's a private road, the city street department doesn't have to spend a dime removing The utilities, sewer and water, are underground. They run in easements everywhere in the world so that they have access if there's a problem, it can be repaired. We're even saying, okay, if you really, really, really want to have it out here and not go inside, well, that can probably work out too. But you certainly don't do it with 32 individual meters, with every one of them with the big old long service line. That's just foolishness. To even suggest that is foolish. Do you want to develop to serve this need? That's the threshold question. My answer is, well, will you do? The real answer will be if the lots are purchased and done this way. If the subcontractors and contractors think this is something that is really beneficial to them, they'll buy and build and improve it. So there's a need that is not being met now. There's no place in town where you can have your buildings with your utilities and your safety and security that we can reach. We can't even reach it in residential areas. Everywhere in, almost, the developed world have areas that are sometimes gated communities or private communities. Well, you don't think that they have water and sewer that are owned by the municipality? Of course they do. So it's not unusual to do that. So the only reason I'm doing this is not to give anybody any lessons, it's just to say that sometimes with a little bit of extra work, a solution can be found to things. Now, the city water department and sewer department, they could get over $8,000 on every single one of these connections. Eight thousand. Background of that, of course, is that, well, we should be getting a return on our investment of the rest of the water and sewer systems in the whole community. Because it's not fair that you get to utilize what they've done when you come in later. Well, of course, you're going to be on the tax roll, but what they failed to tell you is, all of those sewer and water lines that you're paying to get invested in, all of those were built by me and people like me. So we built them in the first place, then gave them to the city, because that's one of the requirements. They get to use them for 50 or 100 years to collect money for sewer and water. And then, they get to come back and say, well, look at this big investment we have that they didn't pay anything for, to charge other people when they want to build a home to pay this big amount of money. That's just another thing. I think this needs to be built very similar to the way that we've designed it. We put a lot of thought into it. It makes sense, it fills a need, it doesn't put the city at any risk, fire, street, water, sewer, garbage collection. And it fills a need that the contractor base in the city would like to see filled. At least, that's what we think they would, and that's why we're proposing to do this. Now then, could we build this subdivision, make it a private road? Of course we can. The right of ways were right enough. We can put a bunch of, and it might even be cheaper to put an asphalt road and curb and gutter and then a city water and sewer line in than to follow what these guys are trying to get us to do the other way. And then, of course, they're responsible for every inch of it. And the police have to patrol. So what I'd ask you to do is I would ask you to approve this. We know what these conditions are, and we know that we will either have to do these conditions or get a concession or do it as a public subdivision. We understand that. What I would like is for you to maybe go just a tiny bit out of where you always are, or not always are, but where you normally are. And that is to recognize that what we're proposing is a valid proposal and that there certainly potentially is a need for it and a demand for it. And perhaps that encourage the utility departments to work with us for a mutually beneficial solution. I guess that's what I would hope that you would do. Any questions you want on any subject, I'll answer to the best of my ability.
We'll hear from staff next if you're finished.
Yep.
Matt?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, Commission members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner. As noted, this proposal calls for plating of 9.1210 acres, more or less, into 32 lots. The Commission may recall that this was recently rezoned from commercial general to light industrial. There are no minimum lot sizes that are required for light industrial. The primary access to the properties off South Valley Road, if you visit the site, there's an existing approach there currently that will go into the private drives. As noted, there's water and sewer that's available for extension. And, let's see, so, staff finds that the proposal is compliant with all applicable standards of City Code 1620 with the conditions that are outlined in the staff report. Most of those are within the Public Works memorandum dated June 16 of 2021. That concludes my presentation. Matthew.
Thank you. Commissioner, does anybody have any questions?
I just have a question to the staff. So, it's been proposed that there be a gate for this proposal. The question, I guess, is that is this road subsequently supposed to be connected to anything? I mean, I can see there's a cliff on the right side, on the east side, so that road will not go anywhere, but the road to the north, is that supposed to connect to anything? Or? Let me think of that.
Merrill.
Merrill Quell, Public Works Development Engineer for the city of Pocatello. And as you're looking at this, the way the map is, the road to the north would run right into another commercial building which houses the Forest Service and the BLM. And it's privately owned, on a 20-year lease or something like that, I believe. That road would go right into their compound and that. The way the cliffs and the way this is set up?
That's not correct.
Oh, you're right, it goes through Logan Robinson's and then through there.
No. The road that we're building stops on our property.
Right.
Terminates.
And that's why it stops?
Yes.
That's why it stops is because if it did extend, it would go through there.
Yes.
There's no place for it to extend, is what I was trying to get to.
Yep.
So if I miscommunicated that, that's what it is, is because you do have that compound and then that little bit of another private ownership right there with the cliffs, and so coming down off there and so forth. So what we're looking at right here is a dead end situation. BLM owns to the west also of here, and so it's not going to expand into the BLM property where it houses the Snake River Hotshots.
So this is all perfectly within code?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Merrill, can you talk to us a little bit about the utilities? I guess I totally understand the difference in having 1,000 feet of a service line and then having a main line that goes through here. However, if they're going to put in a gate, that to me just says it'll be even harder to go in and read the meters than having a meter bank on the outside and then also maybe address fire hydrants.
Okay. The way I wrote the staff report and the way Bill has explained it, I can't argue. He eloquently pointed out some of the issues that we ourselves are trying to work through on developments such as this. The fire hydrants, the way we've written it, if it is a private road, then it has the double check currently, and then the fire hydrant spacing at 300 feet, which is international, it works in hand with the City Code and the International Fire Code at 300-foot spacing. They showed some fire hydrants. There was a gap in one of the areas, it looked like, so that's why we wanted to double check those fire hydrant spacing to make sure that they're every 300 feet so that on the commercial developments for this zone.
Can you just tell me where one of those are? Am I not seeing?
Okay, you see the Y hammerhead to the north?
Mm-hmm.
If you go right to that very end line and you come over just under the black arrow, the survey arrow, that's the north, zero, 13, 56 east, that is a fire hydrant right there.
So that is in an area that's not a lot also, not a numbered lot?
That is lot number one, is what it looks like to me, how it's configured right now. But it is off the road, is a fire hydrant.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So that's the, it's kind of hard to see on these littler maps, but that there's a fire hydrant, and I just am asking that they verify that they are at 300 feet in the staff report, that we meet that criteria. Now, as brought up is if this could be put in an easement and the city would accept it. Right now, our rules don't currently allow that without a special exception. So as Bill has asked to move forward with this and try to work with staff and by the time we get to council, we can have this type resolved, whether it's an easement or it's a master meter at the beginning, or it comes down to the every individual 900-foot service lines, which, for the record, I'm going to step out of the comfort zone and say, from an engineering point of view, that is not a very good plan. However, we've boxed Rocky Mountain, the engineers kind of in a situation here for our code. So we are trying to work through that and would also ask, as Bill is asking, to move forward with maybe the recommendation to work through these utilities with the developer as we move forward. I've tried to write my, wrote my conditions broad enough that there was, you know, some options in there, as pointed out. I think with the gate too, and if there's a gate and an easement, that there's a, maybe there's a, like the fire department, they have the Knox Box lock, so the fire department pulls up there, they can unlock that. Maybe at that point, we come up with a special lock for the utilities that we can get in if there's issues or something like that. There's got to be solutions moving forward for a development like this, because I believe there is a need, need for this type of a development, and there's got to be options that we can come together on. Trying to stay neutral as city staff too, in this, that we can come together.
So would the fire hydrant be private?
That would be, if it's in an easement and it would be a city line, then, and be able to have access to the gate, if we could get over that rule and get some concessions there, then that would be a public hydrant and that we would be able to get to that even though there's easement and access to it. Same way with the fire. If it's private, then there would need to be, like we've done in our rules, a double-check valve in there that, and the vault, which would isolate any, anything that we do, can't control or anything there, backflowing into the city system. So there's the two options that we can look at there for fire, the fire flows.
Is there, do you see, and I don't know the exact difference in elevation between South Fifth and the private drive, do you see a problem with making that sewer connection there?
I do not. It looks steeper there through the gully, but knowing and walking the site in the past, there is a pathway through there, even if we have to, it runs a little steeper through the Idaho, through the 10-state standards as we have adopted to use. There is provisions for the steeper grade over 20% that is, got the anchors, pipe anchors and so forth, to allow that to be a little steeper. We do have those there. The only concern with the steepness in a situation like this with, I believe, possibly low volume water, I could be wrong, would be the solid stacking. So we would have to make sure that we try to keep it as low grade as possible so that the liquids and the solids would
Not separate.
Would not separate.
So if that were to happen, it would be their responsibility to clean it out?
Again, if we can't get through the easements and that, that would be a private line and the responsibility of the property owners there. If we can get through with getting through the gate and the easements there, it would be a city line and we would be able to access that to view any situations and to jet it annually or through our annual jetting.
I have one more question, but I'm going to check something first. Rue?
Yeah, so I have a question with regards to, I guess, since this is dated and we're talking about fire. So do we have comments from the fire department with regards to this proposal?
I work with the fire department, and when you read the Public Works memo that I have, the comment in there is incorporated in from fire, water, sewer, storm, environmental. So we cover the Public Works departments within that memo. So I have been in contact with them on this. They did not have any issues. Their biggest concern was the fire hydrant spacing, it was kind of hard to tell from the maps and that, and it looked like there might be some that were spaced out further than 300 feet so that we could check that.
Yeah, I think my only concern would be timing, I guess, like, because when, in an unfortunate case, there is a fire.
If there's
I think the institution should make sure that you get into the place at the proper time.
This is interesting here, interesting question is that with the South Valley connector now, the closest, I mean, you have, coming from on Benton Street, there, just, it's not Benton, it's Bonneville? Just a minute.
I don't know.
Yeah, by Albertson's, off of Benton, is Fire Station One. Then, just on the other side of the Indian Hills School is the Indian Hills Fire Station. So we have two fire stations located very close to the proximity of here. It is not uncommon for these areas. In fact, we've just done another savage transload station, for instance, one this is recently that has been done that went through the commercial review. It didn't come to planning because it was all in one lot, didn't require that. Again, it's a gated, that's locked in the evenings and that for security. However, it is required, just like this, is a lock that's called the Knox Box lock, which has a special key under security. I mean, the fire department, I think, has three keys on their rigs and the different things with the shift commanders that can go to these areas and be able to unlock the secured. A lot of your commercial buildings are the same way, off-hours and that, if the alarms go off, that the fire department can access those buildings. So that brings down the issue as you're bringing up, the timed response and the access the fire department can make.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? I think my last question will be for you, Matt. Yeah, go ahead.
In our clarification meeting, we talked about slope. Has that been, did you check that?
I did, but they wouldn't let me on the GIS, so I couldn't tell how much of, how much of it was like 15% or anything. So the concern, and this is one that I really didn't look at, was with lots, the question from the Commission was with lots one, five, six, and nine, I think. Looking at those slopes, and whether a slope analysis was required. It's not a condition, just because it's an oversight. But it's something I guess it could be, could be, what I, what you may want to add as a condition is that slope analysis may be required with the middle of a funnel. We'll just leave it at that, simple.
Thank you. I know this is different than residential, but I know typically if there are common areas, CCNRs or something like that are required, do you think anything like that would be needed in this area? I mean, obviously, there's, it's going to be a common area, just how are they going to handle the common area? Or is it, if it's not maintained, it's not maintained and that's the, you know?
Well, that's association.
Yeah, there is Yeah, there is, if common area, it goes with the property association. And if you look at one of my comments on number 5, because, and up in the other part of the plaque, conditions, the CCNRs to be provided to the city there, but, and under development conditions, 5, the roadway will be private if it's there, and noted as common area, individual deeds will need to reflect partial ownership of the common area at the time of individual sale. What that does is that puts that ownership on there with the association to maintain, and all of them together, doing that solidifies, going through the deed process, and not just a note on the plaque, solidifies their partial ownership and responsibility with the road.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Commission, any further questions? With that, I would like to entertain a motion.
Can I rebut?
Typically, no. I'll entertain a motion.
So, I'll take a motion to approve the application. A motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plaque application from Bill Isley of Bad Investments, LLC. I find the application does meet the standard for approval under Chapter 16.2050 of Pocatello Civil Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report, and with an additional condition of verification of slope plans, whether a slope analysis is needed.
Second.
Moved by Rue, seconded by Kirkham. Kirkham, will you please call vote?
Rue?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no other business, so this meeting is closed. Islyn, will you please note the computer clock time?